City Council order, please call the roll.
Kuss?
Here.
Harris?
Redden.
Carlson?
Here.
Kiefer?
Here.
Oops, sorry. Seivertson?
Here.
Cee?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Brings us down to Communications. We have a letter from the museum advisory board. And that's about it.
I think there was something on the table.
Yeah. Okay, General Government. What's this? Right in the letter, okay. Brings us down to persons to be heard, Kathleen and Brian. Thank you, Kathleen.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Lyd, I'm the Director of the Arts Council. I live at 410 Cedar Lower. I want to give you a quick update of what's going on at the Arts Council and then I want to introduce the artist that will be exhibiting his work at the gallery through the month of August. In September, the total number of people coming through the gallery was 489. It was an exhibit by Terry Metcalf and Mary Anna Henrickson. They also did a artist workshop and that 489 included Boom Ball and Square Dance. Also, in September, we did another... Sorry, I'm breathing hard. I just came in from being outside running around. Stories at Latitude 56, which is a new program of the Arts Council which we developed in the hopes of connecting Ketchikan to itself. So having storytellers from throughout the community telling stories about their lives and sort of reminding ourselves that we like each other and that we all have depth and intelligence and humanity. And so it's a great program. We do it up at the Crow's Nest. It's a wonderful thing that happens on Sunday afternoons. We have them scheduled throughout the fall and spring, so I hope that you guys can make an appearance at some of those. In September, our speakers were Kirsten Baltz, Rebecca Boland, Matt Eisenhower, and Dana Fitzpatrick. Also, in September, we were honored to host the induction of this year's members to the National Arts Honor Society at the high school. There were 12 students that were inducted and Jay Buendia is their president and he ran the ceremony and it was really awesome at the Main Street Gallery. They all brought pieces of artwork and displayed it and their parents got to come and see what their young people's artwork looks like in a gallery. So it was pretty awesome. Jay Buendia, we have appointed him as the student representative on our Board of Directors and he's been to one meeting so far. He's pretty overwhelmed by the whole thing, but it's a great opportunity for a young artist to sort of see the administrative side of the arts world and also start to think a little bit bigger if he wants to become an artist or an arts administrator or whatever he decides to do. The National Arts Honor Society in Ketchikan is the only one, the only chapter in Alaska, the one right here in Ketchikan. It was started four years ago by Spring Moon Berry. She's also on our board. She's been on there for four years, so she's 22-ish, so a nice young person, but that's pretty cool that Ketchikan has the only National Art Honor Society in Alaska. In September, we spent a lot of time getting our season going for the next fall and spring. I mentioned the Stories at Latitude 56. We're also introducing a new program called Arts Uncorked. It's an opportunity for our community to learn a variety of different mediums from artists in our community. So we're going to have pottery with Leif Seivertson. We're going to have sculpture with Holly Canoyer, watercolor with Marilyn Lee. Mary Anna Henrickson is going to do encaustic, which is wax, it's really cool. Chris Rose will be doing pastels. Chris Rose is also going to teach a series of drawing classes. So we always hear, "I don't know how to draw." And so we're going to do a series of beginning drawing classes to introduce drawing to the community. We're also reintroducing our Saturday morning art classes for youth. That's first through third grade and fourth through sixth grade and those will be... We'll do two sessions, one in the fall and one in the spring. So we're really busy. We've also got our Torch Night season going. The first one will be Leftover Cuties, which is really... It's a funky sort of jazz sort of European weird band that's going to be a blast. We're really looking forward to it. We're going to partner with Creek Street Cabaret and we're also going to have them perform out at Saksman. So I want... I'm really excited to introduce our artist that's going to be exhibiting in the Main Street Gallery for October. His name is Brian Sastrum. He's from Washington. We've been able to enjoy these pieces already today and I hope he'll give you a little brief explanation of what he does and we'd love to have you join us at the gallery tomorrow night for the opening, five to seven. It's free. There's snacks and we hope that you can make it. Brian?
Yeah, there's actually a lot of cookies, so really good cookies, I guarantee that. Yeah, I paint in acrylics and been experimenting with plexiglass and I do very textural work, very translucent colors. A lot of kind of landscapy, very bleak sort of images in some ways, but beautiful hopefully. So anyway, I hope you guys will come. Very excited about the Main Street Gallery. It's a really nice space and hung up the show today and looks really good and I definitely like the space, so I'm glad I came up here to see it.
Thanks for coming, Brian.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kathleen. Anything else?
I'll just say that Brian did not do his work justice. His pieces have this enormous depth. You can't quite see it on a piece of paper. You have to see it up close. He works on plexiglass and layers paint onto it so that you can see all the different levels. He puts glass beads in there. He does all sorts of stuff in them which you can't see on a piece of paper. So they're just gorgeous pieces and I hope you can make it to his opening tomorrow night. Oh, I did forget something else. The National Art Honor Society is also having a gallery opening in the Commons area of the high school tomorrow night from four to six. So you can go check out their gallery exhibit and then come and see Brian's also tomorrow. So lots of art.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roland Stanton, come on up.
My name is Roland Stanton. I live on Fairview Avenue at 3817. I've been around here 60 years and my subject tonight is duck boats. One of the big problems of the pulp mill... I came here to be a pulp mill engineer, I'm a chemical engineer. One of the big problems was that we soaked our logs in saltwater and then we put them in through the process and the result was we had salt everywhere in the process which led to enormous amount of corrosion. And so I became familiar with the problems of corrosion. And some years ago, we had a woman run over by a duck boat on our dock down here and killed. And it came out of the investigation that the driver couldn't see her because sitting in the driving seat, he can't see the edges, pass the edges and see the ground and he's up in the air. So she was standing there and ran over. She died. All right, recently, as you've been following the news, on a bridge in Seattle, a duck boat failed abruptly. The left front wheel fell off and it ran, swerved over, ran into the side of a bus, killed five people, put 20 more in the hospital. And they've been investigating some since and what they found is no big surprise to me. It's corrosion. Now, when you keep dunking your wheels, as a duck boat does, in saltwater, it means that the saltwater is in the bearings and it's in the shaft housing. And two years ago, the company was told to repair the left front shaft housing and shaft on that duck boat and they didn't. So what we've got here is a company that's careless and that doesn't do their maintenance. And it's hazardous in Ketchikan. It's running on our streets. It's running on our docks and it should be banned. And you might say, "Well, then, nobody can go and take a tour of the harbor?" No way. There's... At the end of Main Street, there are boats, better seats and better design that take you around the area if you want to go. So it isn't like we would miss them. And so I would like to see them banned as a safety measure. The corrosion is not attended to and the hazards are great due to their design and the mechanics of it. Any questions?
Any questions, Roland? Thank you very much. Good question. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor Williams, council members. Good evening. My name is Steve McDonald, a lifetime resident. I live at 412 Corinna. Just to address the two-year extension of Dock Vendor Program in the fall, I believe Mr. Kuss was worried about the marijuana code and stuff and that was one of the reasons. And then also, the behavior of the vendors was the other reason that it became a one-year extension rather than the full three. Is that kind of... Is that what you remember?
I remember.
Was there anything else?
No, I think it was mainly how it was going to operate down there and how everybody was going to get along.
And I believe when I talked to Mr. Corporon the other day, he said that he was going to recommend that they extend it. So obviously, things were ran well and it's like Councilman Seivertson said, "You don't punish everybody, you punish the ones at fault." A heavier hand was... All it had to do was to be threatened to some of the people that were more violators than the other ones. So I don't know of any other issues. I'm trying to stay on a positive note. It does provide a lot of jobs. Income and stuff has been decided to go forward and on and on, eight or nine times at the city council over the years since I've been involved with it for 20-some years. I don't know if there's anything I could address other than the economic impact of it. It's the Duck... Not the Duck, excuse me. The Tac One Air has roughly 200 employees. I have about 15. Southern Tours probably has 12. Northern Tours has 12 or 15. The Duck has 25. It goes on and on. Those booths keep the small independent operators as full as possible. And I know it's not the idyllic situation, but it is the best situation it is. Juno is totally different. They come into Juno for 12 or 14 hours. The people wander around town. The average tourist in Juno takes 1.6-plus tours because they can do a morning tour and an afternoon tour out to the glacier, whatever. In Ketchikan, things are totally different. The ships are in and boom, they're gone. That's why we run things differently down here. So one of the things that's always bothered me in the past is when I hear how Juno runs it. Well, it's like comparing apples and oranges and it doesn't... What would work up there would not work down here. So we have what we have and I'm hoping you guys will pass the two-year extension. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve.
And one last comment before I leave. I understand Mr. Stanton's concerns. John Malouf has four ducks. He did have a real bad accident. I know that he has a real nice facility out there and mechanics that work year-round for him. And I don't know what the federal law says with ducks because it's a different kind of a boat, but I know that he's in compliance because otherwise the Coast Guard wouldn't let him in the water. So I don't know if it's as much as... Maybe it's not so much as we should get rid of the ducks as it is we should make sure that the federal compliance is there. I'm sure it already is. I mean, he seems to be a good businessman, but that thing with the lady was a very unfortunate accident. She decided at the last minute before her ship left and she was, I believe, it's really sad, she was on her 25th anniversary with her husband and kids were with him, or 50th anniversary or something. She walked over to the drugstore on the corner and then she walked back and because it was raining, you could see on the camera that she put her hood over her head and she was looking down and she walked right underneath the duck, is what it was told to me. I never did see it. So that was just kind of like a fluke accidents like most accidents are. But I understand Mr. Stanton's concerns and rather than eliminate him, maybe you should check in or if you're going to investigate this, you should look at seeing what he's doing about it because I believe that that's what they do all winter because that's what I've been told, they work on them all winter out there.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, Terry?
Good evening, honorable mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am Terry Wanzar residing at 435 Hillcrest, city of Ketchikan. I'm here in the capacity of Chair of the Museum Advisory Board you appointed myself and others to in 2014. We have an admirable group of citizens that represent a broad cross-section of the community and many varied backgrounds, half of who are here tonight along with the museum staff. But we all have a common thread. We care deeply about the museum and our community. We are volunteers. We've worked well with each other and staff during the entire process, required strategic planning, core values, mission statement and goals. Now we're at the design and capital improvement part of the museum future. This is my favorite part. You have recently received letters from various parties, one being a board member, Carla Sunderland, and former museum employee. She has very distinct opinions on how the museum design should be developed based on previous studies and recommended intent, so much so that she left the board since this suggested design so far is different from the original plan when the library vacated the building. This step-down by Carla saddens me personally. Her 26-years-on-site experience is extremely valuable. The knowledge is a huge loss to our board. But I'm here to say, there are concerns from all of us. We intend to work with and through this space. Designs are made to be altered and should by no means be rushed. We, as a board, have responded in a letter that's noted tonight. Please read it carefully and I'll be here along with other board members to answer questions throughout the evening and take direction. I must make note that the museum was built as a very special building to celebrate the Alaska Purchase Centennial of 1867 in 1967. In less than two years, it will be time to honor the purchase of 150th year. A walkthrough will show you how special the structure is. The mansard roof, its sloped walls, indigenous materials such as cedar shingles and native stone used in construction, all sitting on the origins of our town, Ketchikan Creek. The first power from citizens' light and power was generated on the creek at the turn of the last century. This is an irreplaceable location. Secondly, we must move forward with the deficiencies of a structure that every building will assume over the years. The roof has been replaced and some electrical upgrades starting. At least let's address the restrooms while funding sources are available. We, as a board, will be there as long as you need us. We want direction and I assure you, we will be part of the solution, not part of the problem. We will not fail as long as you and us remain effective. In closing, life is not about getting in our way. So do you have questions for me?
Any questions for Terry? Thank you, Terry.
Terry, yeah. So how has the process been going? You guys been meeting and the plans are in front of you and you guys have discussions about how you think those things should go? And so I wondered how we got to the point where the plans came to us for this agenda?
We've had several meetings, at least three with Welsh Whitley, onsite walkthroughs showing us exactly what the plans are at that moment. They've gone back and made changes based on recommendations from staff and from our board on at least three different occasions possibly. So I personally, I don't want to be rushed through this. We're working on it and I don't know... I've done lots of remodels and construction and I don't think there's that sense of urgency that we have to work through this that quickly. I know that there's been previous studies for a group, like you mentioned to me in our conversation today. Need a little more time, but I don't want... We've got to keep moving forward.
Anybody else? Thank you, Terry. All right, that's everybody that was on the list. Is there anybody else here would like to address the council tonight? See you then, we'll move into the agenda. That brings us down to consent agenda. Excuse me. I was noting maybe we could add unfinished business 6A1 under new business. I was thinking 1, 2, 7 and 8 and then 7B1. Yes?
I just had a question about 7B1, so I'm...
We'll throw it on there and you can bring it up at that time. Does anybody have any problems with those? Dick?
Yeah, Lou, I want to ask some questions about A2, 5A2. And I would prefer that 7A1, 7A7, the dock extension, not be on it.
Okay. We'll take it up?
Yep.
All right, so we have 6A1, 7A1, 28 and B1. Do we have a motion? You want to remove it in second? Moved in second and Madam Clerk, can you redite them?
Approval of minutes, regular medium of September 17, 2015. A budget transfer repairs to berth four finger float, relation of surplus vehicles, professional services contract, medical director services with Dr. Mark Dumas. The assignment of a tidlands lease, ADL 104817. Exempting the procurement of the annual maintenance services for the IPTV middleware system from competitive bid quotation requirements, Minerva Networks. Exempting the procurement of annual maintenance and support services for the video head-end from competitive bid quotation requirements, Imagine Communications, RGB. And exempting the procurement of flooded battery cells for the electric division from competitive bid quotation requirements, Engineered Equipment Company. Ordinance number 151801 prohibiting objectionable air emissions within small boat harbors, second reading. Resolution number 152605 recognizing Paul Jenny for his years of service. Professional services agreement between the city of Ketchikan and Victor Four labor relations. Resolution number 152606 amending the city of Ketchikan compensation plan to provide for classifications for the position of Controller, Treasury and Customer Service Supervisor and Financial Account Systems Specialist. And ordinance number 151802 amending Chapter 11.12 to telecommunication service and rates in first reading.
All right, we had some questions. Judy, had a question on one?
Well, my question is on the 7B1.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Dan Lindgren, Assistant Manager, KPI Felt.
Thanks, Dan. My question is these T1 terminations. So as I understand it, one business could have several T1 terminations, so this would be an increase of $100 per termination. So the hospital, for example, this could end up costing them a lot of money. I'm just trying to figure this.
There's not a lot of T1 services anymore. It's really more of a legacy service and in this particular case, it's only for data. Most businesses run on much higher speed than T1s. It's really more of a legacy technology, but there are some customers that would have multiple T1s to do their location.
So when we say multiple, what do we... Multiple?
So they might have... You could take, say, three T1s and you'd have four and a half meg of co-connectivity. Each T1 would generally have two terminations on it. Really, the issue that we're trying to address here is in the... You know, there's jurisdictions in the telecom business where you have the interstate jurisdiction and state jurisdiction. And what's happened in the interstate jurisdiction is the rates continue to, you know, go higher and higher. And in the local jurisdiction, if we don't, you know, mitigate that by trying to equalize those rates a little bit, then companies will start to, you know, take advantage. Instead of looking at the true jurisdiction of the traffic that's over that circuit, they'll just tariff shop and say, "Oh, I want that one." So there... It's not... I don't see it as a, you know...
It's not going to be a burden on small businesses?
I don't see it as...
Small businesses?
And we'll give out... We'll put out notice to those customers and make sure...
So if this has been going up and up along the way, why have... Why are we waiting now to address it and giving them such a big jump, I guess?
It's in the... There's a lot happening in the interstate jurisdiction right now and they have this thing they call rate banding that's really compounded exponentially over the last few years. And rate banding, we live in a pooled environment to where all the inter... All the interchange carriers nationwide are part of this pool and the lower-cost companies help to keep, you know, the rates lower for the higher-cost companies. That's really kind of an averaging... That pooling is an averaging methodology. And now as the lower... There's a lot of the lower-cost companies that are wanting to exit the interstate pool which leaves more high-cost companies in there and then they've introduced this thing called rate banding to try to target the, you know, interstate rates closer to what the company's costs are. And as a result, we've just seen this exponential, you know, increase in the interstate jurisdiction.
So a company like Vigor, they're the only ones that kind of come to mind, how many T1s would they have? I'm just trying to wrap my head around what...
I have a list of those companies and I don't even think Vigor is on there. So like I said, generally, we have other transport technologies, you know, over fiber. We have what we call OAN, Optical Wide Area Network Service, that we can do, you know, 100 megabyte or even gigabyte speeds on. So when you're talking about 1.5 megs of, you know, data, it's just not...
It's not significant.
Yeah, it's not something that a larger company could do. To a larger extent, I think it's an extension of, you know, maybe some existing equipment that customers have been using. It's really the, you know, the pre-internet protocol generation of technology. It's what they call TDM, the Time Division Multiplexing Equipment, as opposed to internet protocol, which is really where all the growth and all the, you know, data services are moving to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dick?
Yeah, Dan, before you get away, two questions just for information. One, the T1 lines a dedicated wire to the company, is it not?
That is correct.
Okay. I thought that's what it was. Now, the rates that we've got here, have they already been sort of approved by the manager and being used for a while or was this the first time we've seen them?
So the T1 rates have been in the AMC for, you know, ever since I've been here for a long, long time and we're just recommending that we increase this particular rate. And I... Because it was, you know, something that, you know, we do have the ability to do interim tariffs on services and I... We chose not to do it in this particular case so that if somebody had a huge issue with it, they would, you know, have a means to, you know...
Okay, so this hadn't been implemented yet?
No.
Okay, okay. So...
You'll have to go through first reading, second reading in 30 days.
Okay, thank you. It's just that it was such a large amount, I just wanted to...
Dick, you had a question on something else? Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, it'd be 5A2, the budget transfer for berth four finger float. I'll be going to take Mr. Corporon to answer it.
Steve, can you come up?
Port Harvester Director, Steve Corporon.
Yeah, Steve, the main question is which finger? Are we talking about the south finger float that was broke or something else?
Yes.
And if not, and also what's the status of that float then now?
The berth four south finger float was the one that was broke apart during the April Hurricane force winds. According to the berth four lease, if the city fails to do repairs, they can do the repairs and then build a city. So that's what they did in this case.
Okay.
Survey Point Holdings can perform the repairs, and it's billing us for, for those services now. We don't have that in the budget this year, so a budget amendment is required before we can actually pay them. So it's, it's back in service. However, the, the core permit revision that was requested by Survey Point Holdings is still under review at the core. So Alan Rainbow's still cannot use it.
Are you still working on the Coast Guard float to replace it?
Working on it, but it's not looking real, real good right now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But this, this one's been repaired to, close to the, the condition it was in before the storm. Parts that are better than before the storm, parts that are not as good. Structurally, it's probably not as good as far as ADA access. It's, it's getting closer to being ADA legally accessible.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jerry?
You said that berth four, they fixed it, billed us, would have been cheaper for us to fix it. I was kind of hoping you had a question.
Based on the rates that they charged us, I would say no. If I would have had to contract with pool engineering or Weston Dockham Bridge and gone out on my own, and that, I don't think we would have gotten it done for that price.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Dave?
I'm, I'm not going to vote against the entire consent agenda just because of a couple items here, but I just wanted to note that, you know, when we look at the 5, 5B1, 2, and 3, usually competitive bidding requirements are there for a reason. And maybe there are times we need to, you know, waive those. When I see three of them there, I start to roll my eyes a little bit. I mean, maybe, maybe we're always waving, but that seems like a fairly high number, and I just want to make sure that we're, we're careful, that we're not, you know, putting, putting these things in place for, for, for good reasons than, than wandering around every time one comes up. So I'm not going to vote against it, but just seeing, seeing, seeing three competitive bidding things there kind of gives me pause.
Thank you very much. Alright, anybody else? Bob?
Yes. I think, under the professional service contract for medical director services, that it would be only appropriate to recognize Dr. Anthes for his years of service and that. As it stated in his letter, he, he's hoping he'll recover to a point where he can come back and help manage that. So I'd like to thank him for his service and wish him well.
Thank you, Bob. Alright. See you, no others? Call or roll?
Harris? Zini?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to nothing, six to nothing. That brings us down to new business 7A3, exempting the procurement of body-worn cameras for the police department from competitive bid quotation requirements.
Your Honor.
I'm saying four.
Yeah, your honor. Go ahead, Bob.
Assuming to subpar aircraft six, section 3.1, 2.050A of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the city council to exempt the procurement of body-worn cameras for the police department from the competitive bid and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the procurement of such cameras in the amount not to exceed $33,087 from the TASER International Approved Budget Transfer in the amount of $18,087 from the appropriated reserves of the U.S. Marshall Fund to the police department's 2015 machinery and equipment account, account number 725-00, and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Lou didn't second it, Bob.
Yeah, I, I think that our officers, if they're going to get into the camera issue, that, the, the stuff that's listed, what these cameras will do and how they react is, is amazing to me. And, and I just assume, provide them with the best possible, because these will be used to resolve issues, use as evidence, and protect not only the, the public, but our officers also.
Anybody else? And then we're going to have a policy on how these are utilized, Dave?
I'm sure we are.
Thank you very much. Call or roll? I don't mean it badly, I mean...
Turn them on only when you want them there.
I want to make sure that there's a policy of when they, you know, they, when they're out there, we're not turn them off, turn them on, or whatever.
Maybe the chief can speak to that, just briefly.
Come on, thank you, Alan. And I don't know what's the best way to do it, I just want to make sure we have one, so we're following the, and I imagine you already have it in plan.
Alan Bendiger, Chief of Police, yes, we have a tentative policy in place that we're doing a final review on, and there are certain procedures of when the body cameras will be used mandatorily, situations where they can't be used, what could be done in the video, how it would be viewed.
Very good. I knew you guys would be on topic. Call or roll?
Kifer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Severson?
Yes.
Zini?
Yes.
That passes six to nothing. That brings us down to 7A4, conceptual design for contract 1514, Centennial Building Gallery Expansion and Restroom Renovation, Welsh Whitley Architects. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to see this deferred. There's so much conversation going on, nothing, and we're in no rush, is what I'm gathering from talking to management, talking to some other folks. I just think right now is not the right time to make a decision. We need to find out what...
Okay, we have a motion to defer. Is there a second?
No. And the reason I'm going to say that is, we need to talk about it. If you defer it, we can't talk.
Yeah.
Well, I know, we got, is there a second or not? I'm hearing no second, so...
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move that we discuss the conceptual design for the expansion of the gallery space in the Centennial Building and move forward as deemed appropriate by the city council.
Second.
Moved in second. Bob, you're on the floor.
I'm on the floor. First of all, I don't think there's any bad guys in this thing. I think there is some, some issues to resolve, but again, I'm in agreement that we don't want to necessarily kill the project and get it stalled. I did talk to Carl at some length, and it's been customary, it's been a past practice where we put in placeholders in the budget as we move forward, so that we can work on these projects and, and get into a final approval later on. I appreciate everybody's input. The council put in a little bit of a difficult position, because if we were to vote on something and approve just what staff had, with the disagreement of the, the boards and commissions that are working on this project, then we, we maybe view it as not being sensitive to the fact that our boards and commissions have great input. And then again, if we deny staff, then we get into the, kind of, the same boat. So, for me, because of as much controversy that I've heard here in a short time, I'm not comfortable approving the plan in the fact that I don't want to spend the money, I only want to spend the money once. I want to make sure that we have a well-vetted and agreed-upon plan. I did meet with Matt in regards to this. He has some really good thought process in, in how he got to this particular conceptual design. And reminding folks that the, the offices and break rooms and those are partition walls. The building is a free-span building, so these things are going to, were planned to be put in, so that they could potentially be removed at a later date. We do have to think about how we're going to arrange the bottom floor also for the storage and the work on it, and, and maybe other office spaces. But before we can work on the upper floor, we got to get all the, all the stuff we have stored on that floor into someplace else. So I think that we get, we can work towards that and meet a happy medium. I went through the four acres information. They talked about square footage for a particular thing. They did make recommendation that all the exhibits should be on the first floor. All the support services should be on the bottom floor. Whether we need 3,000 square feet of primitive exhibit today, I'm not entirely sure. I do think we have a small museum with a world-class exhibit that we can utilize. My whole thing when we got into this is I wanted to take our museum from a $2 experience to a $4 or $5 experience. And I think we can do that. It's, it's not something we're going to do today or next year, but it's something I think we can continue to work to and have success. So I do think that we need to look at what we've already agreed upon, and I think some of that is the restroom reconstruction, and it will take up some of the exhibit spaces that exist today. There are some CBV monies available for that, and I think we should move forward with that. But I do think we, if we put a placeholder in, and I think the dollars are around $500,000, that, we do that and see if the, the staff and committee can get closer together. I understand with the number of people, you're not going to have 100% agreement. I understand that. But we have to, I think, for me, I have to have a little bit more buy-in from the overall groups. Well, that's where I stand on it.
Dave?
Yeah. I, I agree this has to move forward, because we need, we need to get that, that space ready to go. The, the problem is, and looking back about a year ago, when I was on the committee with these individuals, at that point, I felt like staff was sort of pushing us, hurry, hurry, hurry. And I don't mean our staff, but I don't mean museum staff. I mean farther up the food chain. Was sort of pushing and saying, get a plan, get a plan, hurry, get a plan. And, and even at that point, it's like, well, we need to know where we're going to go, we need to figure this out. And I think that kind of, that, that's partly one of the reasons why I think this has, this has sort of come, come forward in this fashion, the year has gone by since then. I guess, just speaking from, from my opinion, I'd rather see an air on the side of more exhibit space than less, because one of the challenges we've always had with that facility is, and I realize all museums have lots of stuff in storage they can't show, because no, no museum has enough space. But we had a lot, we had a high percentage of stuff that we never consumed. And so I guess, in the final analysis, I'd rather see more things, you know, more, more exhibit space upstairs. And as, as Bob said, we need to do this, this right this time, because unfortunately, you know, my, my goal would be for, it still remains to be a new museum. Is that going to happen anytime soon? Probably not. So we need to make this something that, that will meet our needs for the next foreseeable future, decade or whatever. I guess, I, I get nervous when I hear things like, well, it's only going to be a temporary space, or we're just making this a temporary thing, because it's been my experience, this is, isn't just the city, temporary things last 50 years. You know, something that's, well, we're just going to do it, and, you know, if you remember the old library downstairs, there were sort of things that were temporary and they never, never changed over decades. Also, I tend to notice in conceptual plans, that once it reaches that stage, there aren't a whole lot of changes made. They don't tend to change dramatically. The concept pretty much stays there. So I guess, rather than seeing us jump into that at this point, I guess I'd rather see us move along, get the, obviously get the, the restrooms dealt with, and then plan for doing, for, for, for making that, making, making the upstairs space a $5 or a $6 or a $7 museum.
Dick?
Yeah, I, I think a couple of years ago when we started doing this, I sat in on that committee with four acres and some others, and this doesn't tend to resemble what I thought was the more or less consensus, and I don't like that word, but that's what we agreed to. So it's moved a lot, and, and I almost look at this and I see us losing display space. Probably that's not quite true, but we didn't really gain much. And so I'll just say my concerns and say that our advisory committee and our staff needs to work it out, and bring it back, whatever they work out, or bring us back some alternatives, so we can pick. Couple of things. One, I don't think that office space needs to be on that floor, even, probably even temporarily. And if, if it does come back temporarily, it's got to be with movable walls, or maybe even movable partitions, but the flat-out, there's got to be a plan for downstairs for that office space, because it's going to go at some point in time. The other one is that, I guess I'm, I know I'm naive, but the restrooms seem like they're a bit large. I don't understand why we have to have a separate family room over to the side, put some shelves in the regular rooms to take care of that. And that opens up some space, and then, just in my narrow mind, the space that's showing in the picture, and the folks can't see this, but to the, to the right and above the toilets is almost wasted space. Why don't we shove the toilets over against the wall and gain some space, because it's narrow? It, to me, it becomes unusable, unless I'm misreading it. So just the committee, and the architects, and the staff can take that for what it's worth and work on it.
Um, Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to allow Matt, if, if you feel like you want to come and address the council, if you don't, that's fine too, but I, I want to at least give you the chance if you want to, want to do that. Again, Matt and I had a good conversation about the building, and you must understand, Matt, Matt is also the city's point guy on the hospital, so he's a very, very busy individual. But one of the things that I enjoyed about Matt is, Matt is a guy that likes to bill things. And when he gets, when he's got involved here, and I don't know, I mean, he's probably worked with a lot of committees, but it probably gets a little frustrating on both sides. So I want to give him the option and see where we go.
Engineering technician, Matt Brown. So Dick, I guess if we just want to kind of jump in, I guess we all have, and I apologize to the audience, but we, we do have a kind of the floor plan in front of us. So Dick, you just want to start with your questions. I can try to answer a few of them, and there's, there is a lot more reasoning behind this than just as it shows here, so...
Go ahead.
What is, what is the specific question?
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to...
If we could just go back through Dick's...
Oh. Over in the bathrooms.
Okay.
Well, I was, you know, like I say, I'm no expert on all this stuff, but to me, the bathrooms seem like they're, they're too large. And I'm, and part of my comparison is I see the amount of people that show up in the dock on, on the visitor center over here, and the appearance of the number of stools and different things in there seems to be almost the same. I'm saying almost, and so I don't believe we get the same impact there as we get on the dock. The other comment that I would have...
So the number, Dick, so the number we were carrying was 25,000 annual visitors a year to the restrooms. So due to the occupancy of the building, it also dictate the square footage and the required number of fixtures required for that bathroom. So it's the occupancy of the building that's driving the size of the restrooms.
I, I, you know, I can't argue with you.
Right.
I mean, you've got numbers, it's just, if it was me, I wouldn't give you that many stools.
Sure.
Anyway, and the other one...
As far as the orientation goes, I, I guess you're looking at, yeah, we could slam them tight against the wall, but one goal here is to, and working with museum staff, learning about display space, they like access to the back of the wall to be able to hang heavy items and secure items to the back of the wall. Part of it's a security measure, and part of it's a, a structural measure on, and how to attach things to the back of the wall. So you see that open space between the temporary exhibit and the restrooms, there's a, there's a reason for that, would be attachment of items to the wall.
It says storage. It says storage. That doesn't mean...
Right, storage, but, so you're displaying on one side of the wall, but you're able to access and secure items to the wall from the backside.
Okay. Well, anyway, those are my concerns. I'm going to let the committee and you guys argue it out. I'm, I'm not telling you you're going to do this. And then the other one, if you wanted to go point by point, was the family restroom, put some trays inside the big one, and use that for something else.
Okay. Well, the thought behind the family restroom was just for visitors that are wheelchair-bound, have companions with them, families that have small children, that, you know, the opposite sexes, they're not old enough to go in the bathroom. Do you take the girl in the guy's bathroom, the guy in the girl's bathroom, or if you're assisting someone in a wheelchair, that would be an accessible family restroom? So that was the thought behind that.
How much have we looked at for downstairs, talked about?
Well, that's where, what we're proposing on is just the first floor renovation. And where we kind of see, where we see this thing going is with a phase two, with the addition of an elevator, eventually, there's no elevator access or ADA access to the second floor of that building right now. So eventually, we will need an elevator, and that would allow us a, a second phase. Much smaller, about, I don't know how big the scope of that would be, but it would be a second phase that would address build out of the second floor. So what we're doing in this phase is, phase one is first... floor. So what we're doing in this phase is, phase one is first floor, moving two offices upstairs, getting storage for everything that is currently upstairs to store safely downstairs, and then phase two would be an elevator and then the second floor build-out.
And-
And then that second phase, I'm sorry, the second phase is when we could look at simply removing some partition walls at the exhibit prep, even the offices or breakroom, whatever kind of consensus we come to. But that's where we could get the full three thousand square feet of, of build-out is once both floors are addressed. But we can't, we don't have enough to address both floors.
Okay. Well, my, um, my question is, you know, listening to people talk about this and talking to members of the boards, you know, space, display or exhibit space is the big thing. So I was just curious what we're looking at, if anything in the way of, in the future, display downstairs, or if that's even thought of or talked about.
There's no mention of that in the Four Acre study and-
So then, in, and I want the committees and staff to work this out. And I talked to Mayor Stanton, and she told me, hey, let us work it out and come up with a, you know, come to agreement on something. And I'm all willing to let them work on it. I guess, you know, the heartburn is from the letter from the one lady and then some of the council members is, you know, we, you know, the way I look at it, there's a lot of room downstairs. Why can't we have the offices and stuff down there? Why are we dealing with a lot of the stuff upstairs where this is supposed to be our big exhibit area? And if we're not, I mean, what are we going to, I guess my question is, what are we going to utilize the second, or the lower area for? And, I mean, maybe I'm just not, I, I know I'm not involved with the whole process and what you have in storage or whatever, but, you know, just as a layperson looking at it, that's the big thing, is that blue and purple spot on the left-hand side in the middle of the exhibit. And so I understand where, you know, people are coming from. And I'm not going to, I'm going to let, or at least I want to, just let the boards work with management and come up with what they can work out. And according to Alri, she says they can, and I believe her, and I'll let it, my remarks end there. But I guess I do reflect what some people are feeling. Dave?
If I may, Your Honor, there's a couple of points that I would like to draw the council attention to. The original direction that staff got was to make the museum work within the original footprint of the building, okay? And because when we, when we, when everything through the Four Acre group and all of their efforts at that time were directed to ideal recommendations, and that was at a time when money was flowing, okay? And even, even at that point, it was a lot of money. It was somewhere between four point eight and nine point five million dollars for everything they were asking to do. This is nowhere close to that. The issue of bringing the offices upstairs during the sea, during, at any given point during the season, there is one museum attendant upstairs, okay? All of the offices are downstairs. And I know that we used to do things differently thirty years ago, that it was okay, you could, you had five minutes, you could call somebody if you had a problem, and they could be upstairs. We're not there today. And having one person upstairs is not a secure way to do things. If you're looking out for, whether it's patrons at the museum, whether it's staff, however it may be. So moving offices, two offices, and the office space himself is less than four hundred square feet. Moving those upstairs at this point with removable partition walls, and when we move, move into another phase later on down the road, is not that big of a deal when you're talking about the security aspect of things. So at the end of the day, it's going to be a council decision where we go with it from here, if we go with it from here. But that's, those things have been some of the driving factors behind it.
Well, from talking to council members and others, you know, everybody seems to be, wants to move ahead with the bathroom areas and everything. And I think if we let the boards and management work on this some more and see what they bring back to us, I think that would be the best direction for the council unless I hear otherwise.
We can do that.
Judy, and then Dick.
So when this whole thing first started, I was not a hundred percent in favor of doing anything to that museum, as you know. But having read different things, a priority to me should be more exhibit space. And if we need to have somebody upstairs in the summer months, then we move a desk up there or something like that, we'll enter, or put a partition out. But to me, we agreed to spend the money because we wanted to display our exhibits. We want to make this a good experience. And so I think that the board and staff need to go back and work this out. I agree, though, that if there's a way we, you know, at least can start with those restrooms, that's something we probably should do. And that's my two cents.
Thank you. Dick?
Yeah, two more comments. It seems to me like it's just about as quick to come up the stairs from down, an office downstairs as it comes out of the back. And if you don't have a clear panel, that staff's not doing any good anyway. That's, that staff up there's going to have to look through a clear panel to see what's going on. The other one is, I know elevators are, are expensive, and I, and there was a lot of talk about elevators when we did this two or three years ago. And I know there's access from the bottom. So we ought to design this so that we do not have to have an elevator. I don't care what the feds say, access from the bottom, access from the top, and they can get it from both ways. But we need to avoid an elevator.
Bob? Yeah, a couple of different things. First of all, I don't disagree with the necessity for maybe two people. I know this office has a panic button downstairs, right directly to the police department. There are times when you get people of questionable character. I don't know how it's done. And, and they're difficult to deal with. And, and you may need extra help. I get that. And again, I think the elevator issue is not just ADA. I think if we're going to indeed put our collections downstairs, they have to be moved between floors. And I'm not too sure that a combined freight elevator, ADA elevator wouldn't work there. And today, they're not hydraulic pits, they're more chain and rail and electric motor type stuff. So I don't think that. But the other thing I'd like to do is give a museum director a chance if there's anything that she may want to add to the conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Severson. Lacey Simpson, Museum Director. There's many things I could comment on. I'm certainly here to answer any of your questions. I did want to respond to Councilmember Kuss with regard to the size of the bathrooms, and what Matt Brown had said regarding the number of people that use those restrooms. He said twenty-five thousand people. Those are twenty-five thousand paying people that come to the museum. A conservative estimate of the actual use of those restrooms would be seventy-five thousand people each summer. Also, with regard to restrooms, and certainly I do not want us to become a restroom. I'm all for, I'm all for smaller restrooms. But the Four Acre City did recommend eight hundred square feet public restroom. Right now, we're looking at four hundred twenty-five square feet. So it's considerably smaller than what had originally been suggested.
If you chose to quarter to use it, then-
I would love to do that, maybe by square toilet paper as well.
All right. If somebody has any questions for Lacey, you?
I want to make one more comment. I saw a report today somewheres that there was, there was a whole lot more people showing up in there than, than what were showing here, twenty-five thousand. I saw fifty-three thousand. Was that the number?
That's for both facilities. So that's combined, yeah.
Oh, that was both facilities, okay.
Yeah, so for total heritage.
Anyway, I was running that out on a per-day basis for the tour season. That's a lot of people per day.
Yes.
Can you have, can you back those numbers up?
Can we back those numbers up? Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. We, we keep pretty, pretty facidious records with admissions and also free admissions as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah. And again, I, I had the opportunity to talk to Carl, and it's not uncommon for us to think about putting a placeholder in the budget as we work out these differences. So presently, I believe, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, we have four hundred thousand dollars CPV money, looking at a three hundred and some odd thousand bathroom issue. And then the recommended was five hundred and sixty-six thousand for the potential remodel as it comes to in design now. Is that correct?
It was three hundred and eighty-eight thousand for CPV funds, and then the balance would be from general funds.
Okay, and that was about five hundred and sixty?
So it's about a sixty-fourty.
Well, I, I think that we should, and I don't know if we need a motion, but if we do, put that placeholder in the budget as we move forward.
I think we can give Matt a direction. During budget time, we can talk about it some more.
Then we'll argue about how to spend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Lou, a question, is that CVP money, City's or somebody else's?
I think that's ours.
I think we, didn't we have commitment from the Ketchikan Gateway Bureau on that, Dave?
I think there was, I believe, I believe you're correct. I don't, I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but I believe you're correct.
Yeah. So I think we need to revisit it and make sure what's there and where it's coming from.
Excellent. All right. I think you guys got some direction. Dave, you satisfied?
Definitely.
Oh, KJ, go ahead.
I want to apologize for my original idea of the deferral. What I didn't want to do is vote on this right now and make a decision. So if it was the wrong word, I would, I didn't mean to say it.
No problem.
It's okay. It's okay.
All right. That brings us down to seventy-five license agreement between the City of Ketchikan and City of Saxman for the use of the former fire station won by Saxman Carvers. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to approve the license agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the City of Saxon for the use of the fire station, number one, by the Saxman Carvers upon such terms and conditions as determined appropriate by the City Council and Director City Manager to suit the license agreement on behalf of the City Council.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Bob, do you want to say anything?
No, I looked at the agreement, and one of the course, the things I had in concern was liability. And I see that that stuff is all in there, and that will all be taken care of prior to occupancy. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we still haven't resolved completely the bathroom issue, but we're not opposed to putting a Sandy Cannon in there if that was necessary.
Yeah, if they want to put a Sandy Cannon, that would be at their expense. The restrooms at the police department are open, their public restrooms are open twenty-four seven if they want to walk up the hill for that. So that would be their choice.
Steve, did you have something to add?
Port Harve's Director, Steve Copron. Yeah, the, the public restrooms are less than five hundred feet, and on the same side of the street. So they are within code for this temporary use to be allowable for that. Talked to the Carvers last week, and they were, sounds good.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Bob, KJ?
Can we add something to that contract? Should we already go back?
He's coming, he's coming.
If you let them into the old station, it's going to get a lot closer because it's going to be right there.
Should we go over and grab it and just attach it?
It's going to be closer, at least for this winter. The goal hopefully would be that it would not go back that way. It would continue on to eventually, yeah.
Thanks for splitting into me, Steve.
But yeah, the, the, the new one is in the current carving shed, so it will likely be coming to the temporary carving shed.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Call the rolls.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Kifer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to nothing. Brings us down to seventy-six financial and compliance audit for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I think there's two, two different alternative motions. So we have a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the Finance Director to negotiate a contract directly with Tusha Ruff and Walpole LLC for the financial and compliance audit of the City of Ketchikan for the year ending September thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Set agreement to be submitted to the City Council for formal consideration and approval.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Bob, do you have anything?
Again, you know, whoever we go out and get, I think there's a great advantage to the fact that they'll have the staff of Mika Richardson and have them going through this particular project. So I think it's a good move.
All right. Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yep.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris? Severson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to nothing. Brings us down to seventy-seven, two-year extension dock vendor program, contract eleven thirty-four. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize City Manager to execute two-year extension of contract number eleven thirty-four port dock at vendor program to include the two thousand sixteen, seventeen seasons.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Dick, did you want to address it?
Yeah, a couple of things. I, in my mind, I almost wanted to do a one-year, just because it comes in front of us and we can say something. But I don't think a whole lot goes on except to give direction to staff to do something. And at the end of that, that will be a six-year period. So I'm hoping that then we will re-advertise it for sure. And with that being said, I grabbed a hold of a copy of one of the leases this afternoon and read through it. And some things we tried to do last year when we did this, we talked about the appearance of the vendors, some of the actions they were taking and so forth. And really, I think it cleaned up a little bit. I think it did go better. Parents probably didn't change a whole lot. Really, all we got out of it was a tag that flops loose on a string on, on, and on each one of the people working. So whether we gained anything or I don't know or not. One place in the contract that talks about, well, I don't know how you want to put it. Anyway, there, there's one issue I've got on the dock, and I did not have an approach to this to staff or not, but it's been going on all summer and for two or three years. And that's, one of the vendors is his vehicles leave the dock, it sounds like San Francisco. Do I need to say anything else? Hope you guys don't know. Well, when you load it, when, when San Francisco loads a trolley all aboard, just as loud as you can hear it, you can hear it for two blocks. And I don't think that's appropriate. So I think there probably is a way in this thing that that vendor can be corralled.
Encouraged to.
Encouraged. Or, or, and, and maybe, there was a comment made by one of the people coming tonight about maintenance on vehicles. And since I work down there, I know how much that is an issue, even with the buses that I work with. There are oil leaks, but that particular vendor also has a real problem, and dock security knows, and has had it off the dock several times. So I'm not too sure we shouldn't be looking at the quality of maintenance. I don't know. But it's something that we need to deal with. And I, I guess I'm hearing it now because everybody knows what's going on. The other thing, and then Steve can answer the question, is, or, or comment is, the booths have a tendency to move around. And I've made comments to dock security a couple of times, and I didn't get anywhere. So I just let it ride. And what it does is, to me, it, there's one clause in here, it's number eight on the page, I don't know what the page is, but will not impede the normal flow of pedestrian or vehicle traffic. And on dock one down there, that booth, at least one of them or both of them moved out into the flow of people coming off that ship. And when I said something, I got the impression it was approved by someone on the dock. And so I, I just left it alone. I'm going to leave it alone. But it, the booths and the signs need to get out of the pathway and back so that the passengers can get off that ship. They can still turn and look at it, and they can see what's going on, but that needs to not impede, impede the traffic. I think that is probably my comment.
Steve, do you want anything?
Port Harve's Director, Steve Copron, again. I'd like to address several things because I hate writing memos after meetings, you know, because you guys own information. So if I can get the information out now, I have one less that I have to write.
Very good.
I'll take the, the most recent comment first. The two booths on berth one, we had an issue this summer with the, the northern booth accusing the southern booth of blocking their view with their sign. No, so what we did, we actually pushed the southern booth further to the, to the east a little bit. So it might have looked like one booth walked out. We actually walked the other booth back in a little bit. So maybe that was where the confusion was. They, they weren't lined up as they normally were. And that's because we moved one of them further out of the traffic lane. So having said that, we, we might inch them back, both back a little bit more this coming year. I don't like the fact that the one vendor does his all-aboard thing very, very well either. If I've got the support for it, then we'll make it go away. I just don't want to make it go away and have the person complain to you guys, and then I'm back up here defending my decision. So if I've got your support on that-
I said make it go away.
I'll make that, I'll make that part.
Let's hear from the-
Is it really that bad?
It's, it's extremely annoying.
Who isn't?
But-
It's Marco. Yeah, it, it's, you- Um, yeah, i- i- it's, what, you've.
It's bad.
It, yeah.
Fix it.
We'll take care of that. Um, I hate speaking for one of the vendors themselves, uh, but after Mr. Stanton's comments tonight, I, I do want to make sure you know the information on Mr. Malouf's duck boats. The duck boats that were involved in the, the safety bulletin, um, for axle repairs several years ago, um, and that might have been the cause of this most recent incident, those are real duck boats from nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-five. The fleet that Mr. Malouf runs are modern GMC-based, um, that, that are, that are not, that, that the same vintage as that, um, and they do a lot of maintenance on these things, and every time they come out of the water, they, they pull over at Bar Harbor launch ramp and rinse off the whole undercarriage and hull of the, of the vessel. And so, um, and the other thing is, there was an unfortunate incident back in September of two thousand and seven. It was thirteen days after I took this job. That's how much it had an impact on me. And it was, uh, I know when it happened. We changed things immediately on the dock. We would not let them back on the dock unless they had, uh, I think we had four people around that thing, one in front, one on each side, one in the back. That winter, he and his insurance company came to an agreement and they installed a four-camera system on every one of those, those vehicles, um, one on the nose, one on port and starboard bow, one on the stern, um, they're on all the time. If they put the left blinker on when they're on land, the monitor has all four cameras with the, the straight ahead one being the biggest screen on, on the screen. Turn on a left blinker, the left, the, the left side, that becomes the biggest screen. They put it in reverse, it's the reverse one. We still make them have a walker on the dock, just one though, and they still have to have a walker, um, when they pull out at Bar Harbor and they're backing up to rinse off, so that's not going to happen again on my watch. So, uh, the, the concerns that Mr. Stanton brought up, um, yes, there were unfortunate things, both in Seattle and here in two thousand and seven. We've, we've, I'm confident that is not going to happen again, so.
Bob, did you have a question?
That's it?
Oh, I thought you had a question, okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Actually, oh.
Dave?
I knew somebody.
Just, just to say, you've skipped me twice tonight, your honor, so.
I apologize.
I'm starting to not feel, you know. Okay, um, Mr. McDonald mentioned that the Coast Guard obviously is concerned about how duck boats operate on the water. Who actually is responsible for inspecting them for, for, for their, I can't imagine the Coast Guard cares about how they operate on land.
They have to meet DOT standards.
Okay.
Um, and they have to have licensed mechanics, uh, they have to turn in their stuff to the clerks, uh, uh, to get their, their certificate of public convenience, um, and then we rely on that before we'll issue them a dock permit. They have to have met all the public convenience, uh, ones as well. So it's, um, it's pretty good. I wish DOT came down here more often for spot inspections. Um, I've been after them for years. They finally came down last year and almost all the issues they found were with, uh, Marco's fleet, so. And he had several vehicles off the road for a couple of days until he got things taken care of. Um, he, he had one vehicle that was very chronically leaking oil, not fuel oil, motor oil, uh, this year. We kicked him off the dock repeatedly. He kept trying to sneak back on, we kicked him off again. He finally pulled the vehicle for the last month of the season, uh, and we entered discussions with, uh, DEC to try and figure out, all right, we kicked him off the dock, but he's running around dumping oil on the streets, so we're trying to be prepared for next year to see what can legally be done, uh, to vehicles that leak excessive amounts of, of fluids on, on a public road, so.
Dave, any other questions? KJ, do you have something?
No, call Dave again then.
Let's get me in.
Thanks.
Just call Bob.
Thanks, Steve.
Sure Bob will ask my question.
Call the roll, please.
Coos?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Kifer?
What are you holding up?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
That passes six to nothing. Thanks for everybody coming. Um, that brings us down to, um, vouchers, Daily News, three thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move for approval of the vouchers that Ketchikan Daily News is amount of three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-three cents.
Do we have a second? Who didn't second it? Call the roll.
Harris? Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to managers' report. Dave?
Nothing to add, your honor.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on managers' report? Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I, I guess it may not be on the report itself, but, uh, I, I did get a comment from, uh, a downtown business person that said that they had some brownouts in the downtown area. Do we have a, is that just storm related or do we have a issue someplace else that?
How, I, I, I don't know the specifics on them, so I.
Andy?
Andy?
Have we had any power fluctuations causing brownouts, uh, it would be on the Stedman Street feeder, that you know of?
Yes, councilmember Seaverton. So it turns out this was two days ago. Um, so, uh, at that time, uh, SEPA was doing repairs in the Taiyi yard. They were replacing, um, the reactors for Wrangle Petersburg. Uh, at that time, Wrangle and Petersburg were on, uh, diesel. They were disconnected from SEPA. SEPA was supplying us with the generator from Taiyi and the operator, uh, misoperated one of the, uh, uh, reset levers and tripped off that one generator. Uh, that put us in a load shed.
Okay.
And, uh, our operator caught it immediately and we were able to restore, uh, everything within nine minutes.
Right, thanks. Thanks, Andy. Anything else? Dick?
Just one, just a kind of a quick comment on the, the, uh, tax collection, the sales tax collection, that, uh, if you look at the numbers, and I'm comparing them to the budget, not to, compared to last year, we're down by a couple hundred thousand dollars. Compare them to last year, we're up some, but the budget's what we're operating from, not from last year's. So we'll see what, uh, September brings, and I'm not very optimistic, so we'll see what it brings up to us.
All right. All right, that brings us down to city clerk's file.
I have nothing, your honor.
City attorney's file. These, uh, dear future agenda items, mayor and council comments.
I, I.
Go ahead, Bob.
And I don't know how we're going to get this to the future agenda item, but we had a discussion on overtime not too long ago, and, um, it was very, uh, you know, apparent that some of our, uh, accounts have gone over considerably, one of them, uh, by over twenty percent. I think there needs to be some kind of language put in, uh, and I don't know if it's a ordinance or a, uh, accounting issue or how we do it, but these departments know that they're going to exceed their overtime limits, um, they can see that coming down the road. They need to get prior approval before they exceed a hundred percent that we set in the budget. Um, I don't like the fact that they come back to us for budget transfers just because they think they can. So, and not to say that they won't get the money if they can prove a good reason why the overtime is exceeding, I mean, and we're all aware that if you have an emergency situation, we're going to deal with that. City manager has the, the right to, uh, send the workforce out and come deal up with us with your overtime, and there's no problem with that. But I do think that when you set those budgetary items as they see them, uh, you can see that you're going to exceed that. They should come talk to the manager and the manager should talk to them. We have, Bob, could I ask you to probably draft something in a manner that works that way?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Dick?
Well, Lou, while we're on that topic of overtime, you know, it was identified for the folks that were here last meeting, that there was somewhere over sixty people that had over five grand in overtime in six months, and it was up to as high as thirty thousand dollars, and I made a comment, and it wasn't, I don't think it was taken as direction, but management needs to look at those positions and see for sure that it was overtime we really needed and was there an alternative? And I don't know how to get feedback on that it was legitimate and that we're going to do something about it. I just, I guess I don't know whether that needs to be, we ask, need to ask the reporter, or this staff says, hey, we looked at it all and we're taking appropriate actions.
Well, I was thinking that, um, budget time, because I know we're all concerned, is I'd like us to set a percentage of we want to see how much we want to reduce, ask management to come up with how they're going to do it, either change hours or whatever, or how they schedule, or what they need to do, and look at the most pro, uh, highest areas, and come up, their job is to come up with a plan, we'll give them the direction, and let's see what they come back with. We can do it before the budget, too, we can send it.
Well, and, and that's making a plan for doing it, but I'm just having a real hard time in my mind figuring out why some of those positions were in that higher range of, say, ten, fifteen, thirty thousand dollars.
Dave, can you guys put something together and get it to us at, uh, on the next meeting?
It's, uh, specifically, if you mean, uh, as far as how we would reduce overtime, was legitimate, or?
I think right now, just talk, uh, the direction that Dave, I mean, that Dick is concerned about some certain positions.
It, I, I think I'm confused by that, your honor, because part of that, and, and I know the positions that councilmember Coos is talking about, and I think each councilmember has in front of them a document that, uh, Carl and the human resources director put together indicating the parameters on which overtime is, where, where, where required to pay overtime, whether it's through contract or personnel rules, however that may be. And the biggest part of that, councilmember Coos, like we talked the last time, is there are a handful of positions, and they're primarily in telecom, where the highest amounts of the overtime are, because there are a couple of people that are the more trained individuals to take care of things during the maintenance window or what may have you. And we can have, certainly, if, if the funds are approved, we can train other people to do that. Whether or not they accept the overtime, okay, is another story, because according to the contract, scheduled overtime is voluntary. So if nobody volunteers for it, then we have to do it as a call-out, which means we're then paying at least two hours of double time for the first two hours of work. So it's, it, it's not as easy as.
Well, I don't expect it to be easy. But I want us to tackle the issue.
Right, so, but when you're asking us to put something together for the next meeting, what I'm saying is, take a look at what was put out in front of you tonight, and then let's, let's talk again and see where we want to go with that.
We'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Very good.
Make sure you make a note, like in your managers' report, so we do.
Yep, I will do that.
Thank you.
And Lou, I just want to make sure the managers have looked at it.
Yep.
And feel comfortable in their minds that there's not a better alternative, so.
Well, that's what I mean, I think this stuff keeps the pride, this ain't going to, this is, is going to be talked through all the way through the budgets.
Oh, the budget's going to.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Dick?
Uh, are you going around?
Yep, going around the table.
Okay, I got one more thing here. Four people raise their hands and I say what it is. I, we tried this a couple of years ago, and I still think with the things going on in this town, and I'm getting into marijuana, and I apologize, KJ, because you're not going to like this at all. This council needs to set an example of being drug tested, and I'd like to see it in ordinance.
Anytime. I'm not afraid.
Then can we ask the manager, I'd like to see four hands, ask the attorney to bring back us an ordinance, or whatever it takes, and I don't know what it is, that the council is in the game, and set an example.
Do we have four hands? All right, we'll see what the.
Yeah, you don't care. She doesn't care. She does not care. So that I, so, just so that I can talk, talk to the attorney when he gets back. Okay, so I saw four hands for the attorney to draft an ordinance for the council to be subject to drug testing.
And I don't even know if we need an ordinance.
And, and also, we can't, I mean, I'm not sure that would that have any value on future councils.
I know, that's, I mean, I mean, we can. If I say talk to the attorney and see what he.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just trying so that I, yeah.
As long as it's voluntary, I don't think there's any problem with it.
Voluntary, mandatory, or then do you want to see ramifications? To what extent? Yeah. And they would truthfully sue us.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, okay, everybody will get theirs. Dave? I mean, Bob?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we, we did discuss this at some, uh, extent, uh, not too long ago, and, um, of course, we were looking at all the non-CDL holders, uh, within the city of Ketchikan, and then there was a, um, thing that came back from Mitch that talked about, uh, some public safety people and stuff that there, uh, we're not allowed to do that under certain rules and regulations, so it's not as easy as, at, uh, um, as some people may, may think it is to, uh, profess that you're, uh, drug-free and then to be able to test in, in Ketchikan. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I think that, uh, if we're doing it just strictly to the governing body, I don't, I don't necessarily see that as being a problem either, um, never. We'll just let Mitch tell us what we know.
Spring cups to next week.
Judy, do you have anything?
Uh, I just want to thank the council members and the assembly members who are going to be participating in the roll in my wheels this weekend, um, and that's for, uh, disability awareness, and wish everybody who's running good luck and see who's going to be at the table next week. That's all there is.
Ian?
Nothing.
Dave, I mean, Bob?
It's been there, can you talk to him? I look up your data.
I, um, I like to express the sheer joy of being a grandparent, and I happen to be, uh, become the grandparent of an eighth grandson, uh, this week, so, um, and everybody doing one, one, just a blessing.
Thank you. KJ?
I think you skipped today. I understood that.
It's going to be last featured.
First, I want to remind everybody, don't forget to vote next Tuesday.
Thank you, KJ.
I mean, well, everybody knows that. And the other thing, and thank you for springing the last forty-five minutes on a regular meeting, talking about overtime instead of having a special meeting, overtime meeting, to discuss overtime. Thank you.
Dave?
He just wants to get paid extra for that.
I didn't get paid.
A couple, a couple things, your honor. Um, first of all, just going briefly back to the, to the museum discussion, I, I want to make it real clear, I, I strongly support the efforts of the staff and, and the board has been bringing this, I, I really do. Um, just, in, in, in my perfect world, there'd be a little less blue on here and a lot more, more yellow, but, well, you guys work it out, bring it back to us in the material part. Because that's what we do. Um, the other thing, this, this kind of goes back to your discussion about brownouts, I was going to raise this anyway. Um, you know, one of the great things about living in Ketchikan in this decade as opposed to the seventies is, um, the power doesn't usually go off every five seconds. Anyone who lived here in the sixties and seventies, they know, power, boom, boom, you just kind of got used to it. Yeah, the power was always better. Well, unfortunately, I have, I have to note that it's been going out, and not just the brownouts, there's been a bunch, I, I'm just kind of curious. I, I would almost, in the old days, we'd say, oh, there must be a bond issue coming up, because the KPU keeps crashing. I, I, that's not the case, so. I, I, I guess I, I would like to find out, besides the brownouts, it just seems that there's been a, a whole bunch of outages recently, and the reason I know that is because whenever there's an outage, even though I work in a building that has a generator, that brief little pause before a generator kicks on, my computer crashes, and it takes me about twenty minutes to get things going on, and I've had to do that probably eight or nine times in the last several weeks. Plus, my fancy-dancy million-dollar, uh, refrigerator at home un, unresets itself, and so when the power goes out, I know it's gone out because I go home and things are starting to melt. So clearly, there, there seems to be some issue. There have been a lot of these little blips recently, and I guess I'd be curious, don't, to discuss it now, but get back to us, let, let, you know, there's nothing I have to worry about here, we have to be fixing something, or there's not some major problem, or, because there have been a lot of little outages recently. Yes. Well, yeah, I know, but, you know, we, we, it's not all the news, but it's one of them.
Andy, did you want to say something? Make it quick.
Andy's an out, uh, vision measure, KPU electric. Uh, to answer council, uh, councilmember Kifer's, uh, comments there, so, uh, we did have an inordinate amount of outages in, in August, but in September, I just authored the month report. By the way, I summarize them in the managers' reports. So if you look in the managers' reports, there'll be a whole list of the dates and times and, and the, and the causes. Um, however, so September, the only outage that we have recorded was the one two days ago at the end of the month. So I don't think you should have had that many blips. Uh, now, we do have individual service issues where some cutouts or some fuses or something like that, a transformer, but not system-wide. but not system-wide.
Right. Maybe it's just in Bear Valley, maybe it's just more.
Your charge is. Bear Valley, so Bear Valley is Ketchikan Figure Three, and that's one of the ones that tripped two days ago.
How about, they're, they're, and, and maybe it's been a couple, a couple weeks, but, you know, you're right, August was, was, was.
August was terrible.
Yeah. So it wasn't just, it wasn't just my imagination.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dave?
No, no, sir, that's it.
All right.
Because my car will go off tomorrow. He's going to pull the switch.
That's right, Andy knows.
All right, that brings it down to me. Um, I just want everybody to remember it's, um, to go vote on Tuesday. Um. I'm trying to think what else is going on. You know, I've been doing something. I'm glad we're talking about overtime, I'm glad we're talking about, um, um, the museum, I'm glad people have, um, a passion for it. It seems like everybody has a interest in how it should be, but, and it's a, um, you know, it's something that I've always been interested in, too, so. I think with the people that we have on these boards and staff, I think we'll come up with something good, so. Thank you, everybody. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Reminder of it in the special meeting, the Monday following election.